All right, City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1396. Today is May 16th. It is now 8:00 PM. We will start by standing and staying in the Pledge of Allegiance. First item on the agenda is roll call. Let the clerk call to roll, please.
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Present.
Oat.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
All right, let the record show all council members are present. Item number two is everyone received the Agenda Minutes from last work session? Last council meeting?
Yes.
Any corrections or adjustments to be made? Hearing none. All right, we are going to move on to item number three, which is Presentations. And does anyone have any presentations? Hearing none. Going to move on to item number four, and this is Communications from the Public. So this is a time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please go over to the podium, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are tape recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So if anyone wants to go to the podium and speak, yeah, go ahead. There should be a sign-in sheet. Is there a... Okay, good.
My name is Debbie Rice, and I am the owner of Sidney Saloon, which is right across the street. I've been in your city for 45 years doing what I do, and that's almost a half a century. I had a speech all written out what I was going to say. I'll be more than happy to. I've had a speech already made, but then that doesn't work for me. It's better just to talk from my heart. What I'm coming, what I'm here for is I understand that the city council has an ordinance that there's no more bars to be in Forest Park, and I can appreciate that because I don't want any more competition. However, I have outgrown the one I'm in, and I wanted to know if I could move over to the Promenade Shopping Center where there'd be more parking and a bigger room and more things that I could do because I am limited. We don't have any parking. We can't, I mean, we've become a problem because we take up all the parking and everybody... We were doing breakfasts just not too long ago, and it was great. It was a big success. Rita, the girl over there and right there, she was the one headed it, and it was a big success. We had waffles and everything in the world you wanted, but we took up all the parking, and it caused a problem. So we had bacon got to be $10 a pound, so we had to shut it down. But I've been in the city for 45 years. A lot of you are new on the council and may not know me because there's not been any reason for me to be over, but I would just like to say this about myself. I'm not trying to toot my own horn. I'm just trying to tell you who I am. I am the one that gave the City of Forest Park their very first thermal imaging camera. I was watching TV years ago, and I saw it, and I was so impressed by that. I went down the street to, it was Jerry at the time, and it was called Yesteryears before Cruisin's moved in, and it was an ice cream parlor. So I went to him, and we used to be really good friends with everybody. You needed this, or you did that. None of us what it is today. So I went down, and Jerry had a lot of connections with St. Rita's. So we got a lot of things, and we did a street fair, and we raised enough money that whole entire weekend. We worked, donated a lot from the bar, and it was a couple hundred short, and I gave the money to Bob Stagman. He was the police chief at the time. So that's one of the accomplishments that I've done. The other one, I've been in your city, paying taxes, have people work for me for, like I said, 45 years. I've also been Business of the Month. I got an award for doing that, the camera, and like I said, I've just been, we've, I'm not going to lie to you because things have changed. Things have changed. We all know that. You can't even go to the grocery store anymore without, you know, going in full armor. I do the best I possibly can to keep down trouble and keep things down. I just simply have outgrown that bar, and I need more room. We need more for parking, and I'd like to do different things at the Promenade. I'd like to, if I could, have the back parked by Al's Barber Shop. I'm not a new bar. All I want to do is transfer the license that I have over. And I'm sorry.
Ms. Debbie, I'm sorry. What's the name of your business? I didn't hear that.
Sidney Saloon. It's right across...
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, Sidney Saloon. And like I said, it's, but we just, there's a venue over here, I understand, on the Promenade for weddings, and Rita, that's where Rita and all those girls' expertise comes in. We can cater those. I understand Tetla, is that my San that writers Prius or one of the companies is coming? Tesla? And there, that would be so great. We could have lunch, and if you, the one I want is in the back where we could have all that parking back there, and then there's that patio, and my license allows me for a patio. So we could go out there with umbrellas and tables that could sit outside for a little bit, you know, and have a cocktail and then come back in. And I'd like to do entertainment. I don't have the room for it now, but I'd like to do some kind of entertainment to where they could do like jazz or, you know, something, but I want to go for the older crowd. And right now, you know, I just, I've got younger, and I don't want that. But I need more room in order to entice it, to accept it, and to let it happen. Like I said, I know a lot of you don't know me, but I've been around for a long time. I've helped a lot of people, and I'm not trying to toot my own horn. I'm just trying to tell you who you are dealing with. Forty-five years of experience, and I think that kind of gives you a rough thing what I want to do. If you allow me to simply transfer my license over, and we'll make it as nice as we possibly can, we're going to try to go towards more food, maybe catering the venue, more bigger lunches. It depends with the food cost. You may only get a half a sandwich. We're not sure just yet. We'll see what happens. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone on council have any comments for Ms. Rice, correct?
Uh huh, yes, that's right.
I live right over in the H section.
Do you? Have you ever been in?
I suppose years ago, but I did go in.
I've been at that particular spot for 16 years.
Really, no.
When they, when the man that owned it, his name was Brad Glass, and it was just ground, and I went over there. I had Debbie's on the other side of town, and then I wanted to extend, so I came on this side of town, and that's why I didn't build a very big one because I just wanted the overflow. You know, most of that was the bigger entertainment. And then when I came over, the barber shop and the eyeglass man, Gary Williams, they all came over with me too. And so we had three of the spots right up front. Well, Brad Glass, he was the owner, he liked to do race cars. So he built a race car, and he was racing his car, and the car flipped, and he was thrown out, and he was killed. And it happened right in front of his wife. So Sandy, not wanting to have anything to do with this, that was history, not hers, so she ran it and she operated it for a long time, for about, matter of fact, five years. She just recently sold, and there's new owners now. They don't know me. They don't know me from anything, and I just, it's just time for me to move. And that's, any questions or anything that y'all have for me? Be happy to answer them.
The one concern I know that some of my, some of my neighbors have is that there's been, there's been a few incidents over there.
Yes.
And so, and I'm not sure if that's because it is in such, it's a tight place.
I have to tell you, I think that is some of it. Now, you know, I mean, you can't, you can't control, but we do the best we can. We try to put an age limit on it. We try to, we try to cater to different things. We have karaoke. We have food. We do all kinds of different, we have margarita night. We try different things, but every once in a while, you're going to get one that slips in and, oh, she touched me, you know, and then you got, you got, you know, and I can't help it. But we do hip security. We address it immediately, and, and yes, we have, I'm not going to lie, in 45 years, yeah, we've had trouble. But, but it is true. That's the, that's the reason I said I've outgrown it. I need more room, and that should, you know, take down on some problems because, and there's, and different things, you know, I can do different things I'd love to do, jazz, some rhythm and blues, and nice things for people like yourself. You and your wife want to come out for a night, have a drink, be safe, be happy, have a place to go without having to go outside of Forest Park.
I will say there's definitely a need within our city for quality entertainment, adult entertainment. I do share some of the concerns as councilwoman Clark. Just, I've never been there. I've driven past there, but I've never been there for concern and fear of what may be
I understand.
there. But contingent upon the agreements and the discussions upon council, I think we all may believe that there is a need in our city to have quality entertainment for adults.
We have, with, these are, they all came with me. I think you figured that out. And everybody has different connections. Everybody has different jobs, and that's what they specialize in. This one is in cooking. This one is in security. This is in bartending. Different, different jobs and different people. It took me a long time to get that good staff, but I have them. And I can sit up here and tell you and raise my hand to God, I got the only honest staff in the world.
So all of these people are your staff members?
She's, she, oh, you're the daughter. She's the one I named the bar after.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and they're not all staff. There's a couple that are just really good friends and customers, and they did want to come and talk in my behalf, which I really, really appreciated that they did that. So...
What's your, go ahead. What's your default capacity for your department?
I have no idea. When, when they, when, my husband built it for me.
Thirty fifty cars can get there and come through here?
No. What, when we built, when my husband built that for me, he has, he has since then passed away. But when he built that for me, we went through everything in the city, come over, check this, check that, and then when we got all done, they never did give me exactly how many people could come in, and I've asked for it a couple of times. So I really honestly don't know, but I do know there is not much parking because you've got other pla, it's all full over there. So when everybody comes in, you know, just, just us coming to work pretty well fills it up, and, and it does, it creates a problem.
Is it pretty much taken up just by you?
Just us employees. I mean, you know, and so, and then, you know, that's, that's what I'm trying to say to you. And these people came with me, and other people would like to say something in my behalf, if you don't care?
Yeah.
You're welcome. Do you have any more questions for me?
Now, where are you going to move? You want to move?
Right, right here at Promenade. It'd be so easy. We could do a little chain and just pass the bar stools right on down.
I have a question, more so a comment. I've been to your establishment several times and...
And, did you get good service?
I had a great service. I mean, this is about 10, 12 years ago. It was one of the first places I went to when I got back from Iraq. And I never felt any, you know, danger or anything like that. I mean, everybody was more than professional, and probably a good chance to meet you in person, but thank you.
What a nice thing to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's, it's been, like I said, I was 28 years old when I came into the city, and I'm now 72. So if I don't get to move over and I, and I, and I can't stay there, I'm going to be in a jam because my husband's passed away, and as you all know, you live on Social Security. So when he, when he passed away, I got his, but I lost mine. I still got the same house payment, car payment, electric, water, so I do need to work. And at my age, I don't even know how to use a computer. So other than working at Target and handing you a ticket, I don't know what I can do.
I would assume if you're trying to, so if you're trying to expand for lunch service,
I want to expand everything.
With all of that, those other businesses that are daytime dependent with the parking?
Yeah, there's not, like when we did breakfast, we lost, didn't we Rita? Chicken, we lost so many people that said they wanted to come.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it was crazy.
And we did what we were doing, and the businesses complaining about parking space. Not so, we're customers.
Okay, so Ms. Rice, what recourse are you looking for for council? Do you say you want to change your...
Yeah, the ordinance are there's no more bars in Forest Park. So when I asked to come and talk to my landlord, he told me to talk, I can't think of his name now, they want to, the guy that's in charge of it, he said he's the one that told me there was no more bars allowed in Forest Park. I can't think of his name. Anderson, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I said, well, then I'll go and talk to the city manager.
Okay. And are you, you said you're trying to move to the Promenade?
Yeah.
You contacted the owner?
I did. I did. I talked with them, and originally we were looking at where the Jazz in the Park was, but I don't really think I like that as much and just looking around. So we went, I kind of like the back because then you'd have the whole back and be all open. There's different doors. That beautiful patio is there, and my license lets me go outside. So I could put out some tables, some pretty colored umbrellas, and then you could sit out there, have a margarita, taco, you know, whatever, and go in and out as late as we, as late as we could do it. It's a really nice patio. Honestly, that's what sold me on the Promenade. And then Bunny and I went over to look at it. We drove back, and we weren't back two minutes, and Rita come in, and we, I said, let me take her and show you where I want to go. They already smashed up the glass. Yeah, smashed up the glass. That quickly they did it. So you do need something over there, you know, and we will do, I mean, I know what I'd like to do is if you approve it, and then I've got people that are interested in building it, so I'm going to get started on it right away, and then we get, get it built, and then, you know, and then make the transition. That way, nobody's really out of work.
Okay. Just bear for a moment, John, what is the process for a liquor license, liquor license transfer?
Well, that'd be up to the Department of Liquor. That's not us.
That's not us?
Yeah.
We would just have to...
The location of the business would be us, and you'd have to change the ordinance.
Right. And then we would just have to say we have no objection to them having a liquor license?
Of the transfer, yeah. But, but she's not transferring ownership of the license, just her location.
Location, okay.
Correct. I would have to have a lawyer have it all done. Well, the only thing that bothers me is with today and COVID and everything being closed down, how long would it take for somebody to come out and finally do the final approval? That does bother me. That's why the sooner I could get started on it because everything's empty and pretty well kind of tore up over there. So it's going to be a lot, new floors and, and everything.
I think this would actually still be handled in the planning department. So the recourse that you have would be to continue to talk to Chris Anderson. I'm not entirely certain about...
He said it was up to you guys. That's the one I talked to, was Chris Anderson.
I'm not entirely certain if we did no, no bars, or is it no bars on this side of 275?
It's a site, 275.
And see, but I'm already here. I'm just trans, I'm just moving.
It's not a new business.
When I understand, John.
I'm sorry, with this machine running over here, I'm having a hard time.
I'm sorry. That's what I'm trying to understand. Also, if she's already here, she's already on this side of 275. She has a place. She just wants to move. That's not a new, that wouldn't be considered new.
That's a common reaction to that, but the location is the issue, not whether it's a new business or an existing business. It's locating a new bar. It's a zoning issue. Our code would have to be amended, which would require public hearings on a zoning code amendment. So, you know, you have to go through that process. But my recollection of it was to limit the number of bars. Now, I'm sitting here tonight not knowing this issue was coming up, so I haven't looked at the specific language to know if you apply a liberal reading of it. It just means numbers of bars, so we don't have a violation, but...
Right, because that was my, when we did that, it was my understanding that we could not have any new bars.
And I just don't remember the language.
This side of...
That's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a minute.
So with regards to this issue, is it possible that you can meet with Planning Director Anderson and then review the...
I'll look at it. When I go to the office tomorrow, look at it, and I'll let city manager know what my thoughts are on the actual language of the ordinance.
Okay. And then can we have like a, how long do you think that would take roughly, John? I know you're busy.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Can we have just like a week turnaround on that, Don?
Put it on the agenda for the work session, and I'll discuss it there.
Okay. Can you bear with us, ma'am?
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Because we'll, after we have the law director review the ordinance, we'll see what we can do about the situation, okay?
Okay.
The question is also, is that the location that the city, we just had a two-hour discussion about businesses in the community and where they should be located. Is that the location for it? So that's a broader discussion.
Yeah. To that end, have you already signed anything with the new owner propping up?
No, as soon as I talked, I just talked to them. I just wanted to see inside the property. Then I, she told me first step was talk to Chris Anderson. I did. And he was excited about me coming over, but he said, he said he can't tell me how many times he's turned down people that wanted to put a bar there. And I said, but I don't, it's not that. I just want to relocate to have a bigger spot. And then he suggested, he said, if you want to talk to the city council, it's best if you can get them all together. And he suggested this. So, yes, ma'am?
So are you at...
I'm sorry, Chelsea.
That's okay.
So, no, I thoroughly appreciate y'all all coming out. That is, that is some support. I just hired 12 new summer staffers, and I don't know if I could get them to come out on an evening someplace other than their job. But thank you so much for coming, and my only, I think, perhaps just maybe word to the wise, so to speak, would be, you know, this is a prime example of businesses, not all, not all bars are the same.
True.
And what, how you can elevate and help fill a gap in the needs of the community are really important. And so if you could, if you're able to perhaps kind of build that vision out a little bit...
Yes, I'd be happy to.
I'm not saying spend a bunch of money or anything like that because, but I do think that it's always beneficial for us to kind of see that vision.
I'll be honest with you. I'm really not happy with having to go out and borrow money at my age to redo this because I'm already set. Everything's there. We got the patio. We got everything, everything in the world that we need. So I'm not happy about that, but when it's done, I'm going to, we're going to, like, like Rita, the one back in the back, she's my manager, and she is so good with kitchen and food, and I want to try to expand it to that. So I'm going to go with her, and we're going to sit down and work together and like, depending on how much, where they let me have the room and stuff over there, if y'all say yes. Like this may be a bigger dining area, the bar further towards the back, then going out to the front, you know, and there's just room for, like I said, I'd like to have some kind of entertainment. Maybe if I could only do it on a Saturday night, you know, if that's all I could afford to do at the beginning, it's Saturday night, there's rhythm and blues, jazz, something like that to attract older couple, couples, get something to eat, have a cocktail. You're really still close to getting home. You're not having to go from one city to the other. And, you know, because it's, it's a tough business, and I'm not going to tell you for one second that it's not, but I'm going to tell you one thing, and every one of them can value, we sure do work hard at it. Am I right? Everybody does.
We, on behalf of the city, we appreciate, we especially appreciate your business. Forty-five years and the 16 years at the location is tremendous, but if you could just bear with us, we'll come back and discuss it at our next work session meeting. So in a week, and then after we make a deliberation, we'll have the planning director contact you directly.
Okay. Do you want to talk to anybody else?
Does anyone else want to make any comments?
Yeah.
Yes, come on, state your name.
I'm thinking restaurant with a liquor license more so than a, more so than a bar, but a restaurant with a liquor license. Yeah.
Hi. I'm Linda Garland. As I sign this, I'm going to keep talking because it's getting late. I met Debbie Rice in 1996. I was divorcing after 25 years of marriage. It was in March. It was also my birthday, and I was looking for a place to celebrate my freedom and celebrate my age of turning 44. And I'd never seen, then the bar was named Deja Vu. It's over on Southland. And it was a Saturday. I'd been out shopping, and I'm like, let me just pop in this bar. Maybe she'll let me have a party in here. And Debbie was there. Debbie's never there on Saturday during the day, but she was that Saturday. I had a birthday party, a celebration of my divorce, and I also played pool on two pool leagues. And so what we started, we had so much fun. Sharks and Shooters was down on Pleasant Avenue. It was a huge pool hall. And once a month, whosoever's birthday was in that month, we had a birthday party at Deja Vu, which then became Debbie's destiny for whosoever's birthday it was. Debbie always, the bar was always mixed. You're going to have a fight every now and then. You've got people getting drunk. Somebody's going to get mad and punch somebody, but it was never guns and knives and shootings. There wasn't big drug things going on. It was a safe place to go have fun, and they had karaoke then, and everybody was into this karaoke. And then, like all these people do not work there, but these are Debbie's patrons. These are the people that come there, almost, we got some to come to every day, honey. I mean, you know, they, they, they at Sidney's every day. That's not the problem with those problems. But you cannot look at somebody who's from a different city north or south, and, you know, they talk bad, they act bad. You can't tell them you can't come in here. You know, you got to wait till they mess up to tell them you can't come in here. Debbie takes care of her customers, and we all take care of each other. I just got cured of lung cancer. I've been cancer-free for six months. So many of these people, so many of these people, including Debbie, would pull up my driveway and drop off soup. She knows I love a good coffee cake or cookie or, and she'd drop them off. I remember many, many times, we, we don't do it too much at Sidney's because it's too small, but at the bigger bar, when Joanne's husband, Jerry, got bone cancer, we held a benefit on a Saturday and raised over $3,000 to help them pay their bills. And this was back, oh my God, what, 2,000, somewhere around 2,000? Somebody else was in the hospital having surgery, couldn't work, couldn't pay their bills. We helped out. When COVID shut them down, one employee gave every employee their $100 bill because she had the money put up, and she knew they were struggling. It's a family, and if Debbie could get this bigger place, I'm telling you, it would be so good for this city because right now, I haven't been out in a bar for two and a half years between COVID and my disease, but if there was a place like that where I could go, I like old school. Don't like rap, don't like, no, no. Give me some old school. Give me, give me some jazz, some blues. I'm in there. I would love that. I would love to be able to go out on a Saturday night, and we got to have a pool table. Mama plays pool. Got to have a pool table. But I mean, it would just be so nice, and you're not going to get a more caring person, and she'll go out of her way to do anything that someone suggests that could help her business, help her employees, or help her patrons. Whatever, you know, the one guy was complaining about garbage. He thinks any garbage in the parking lot comes from that bar, and that's not true. So my daughter and I went and bought a little Galvin ice garbage can, and Debbie put it outside the door. If you're gonna be out here eating or whatever, use the garbage can. They were using it. Well, then he called and complained because it was an eyesore. Yeah. But she tries. She put in cameras. She has security. They pat people down. They have women open their purses. But you still got that one bad seed that comes along every now and then. But I'm telling you, she's the best and I think you will really be happy if you make the decision, yes, she can come. That's all I got to say and I'm going to.
Just by a show of hands, how many of you are Forest Park residents?
Uh, well, not anymore.
Okay, thank you. That's okay.
We'll keep you.
And I don't recognize my house anymore.
My name is Alexis Alexander. I was, I used to be a Forest Park resident. I graduated from Wentworth High School, 2009. Went from Wenton Forest all the way up to the Wentworth Warriors, so I am OG Forest Park. Um, just want to make it quick, I have a couple of points that I do want to hit in behalf of Ms. Debbie. And just to give you a little background about me and Debbie Stilley, um, Sydney Stilley. Um, my dad was a regular there, been a regular. I just recently started coming. I'm not a big drinker, I'm not a big bar hopper. Safety is one of my major concerns. I'm a mother, I gotta get home at the end of night or early morning. However the night go, I gots to get home. So safety is a major concern. I don't have that concern when I walk through her doors. Not one. My daddy is a senior, he ain't gonna like that, but he's a senior. He continuously walks through those doors. Safety is not an issue, such on Ms. Linda's point. Don't let one bad apple spoil the bunch. This is family. I just became employed with them and I really don't see myself working at another bar. It's not gonna really happen. Um, as far as quality entertainment, that is something that is needed in Forest Park. Being a previous Forest Park resident, I don't mean to offend, just being honestly, Forest Park has gone down as far as business. Um, it's not really a place unless, because I'm from here, I know the little holes in the wall that I can hang out. But as far as being one of the top suburbs within Cincinnati, ain't nowhere to kick it. Where we gonna hang out? You know, Debbie brings a different side. Debbie brings a different vibe. Even in my 30 years, it's a vibe for me. Even in older years, it's still a vibe for them. It's the environment that they can, whether it's jazz, rap, blues, gospel, whatever's blasting through them speakers. Somebody is gonna appreciate it. Um, and the expansion will help with that quality. Where we not just going from a jukebox on the wall, we're going to a DJ. Hopefully we can get a DJ every night, but if not, we can work with a DJ. Or we can have a space for a live band scheduled. We can have age restrictions if needed. You know, we can work with you, Debbie is able to be, you know, she can, the approach to it is what really brings an eyesore to the bar because when you look outside, oh, it's nothing but people hanging out in their cars. Well, come inside, come inside, stop looking at it from the parking lot, come inside. And I feel like with that expansion, Debbie has great ideas to bring to life and that will really help. Um, another thing that I've noticed, just being a short time patron and as an employee, surrounding businesses do harass. Everything is not on Debbie, just because that's the type of environment. Bars bring a bad environment, it's not always true. It's not always true. The type of harassment that Ms. Debbie is seeing is to the point where it offends. It really offends from the outside looking in, it offends. Because it's like, it's a bar. I come here to drink and enjoy my time, I don't want somebody observing me, enjoying my drink because you don't necessarily like the environment. It's unfair, I pay my money, just like everybody else, I'm grown, I want to enjoy myself, I don't want to be observed like that. Um, the business hours, I honestly think there's not really an issue with business hours. I think the hours that Debbie does have are common hours for a bar. Um, and with her being an established, being, with being established business right there, anybody new coming in shall automatically, it's a, it's a bar. You know, it is one of those common sense things, like if you know you're gonna be a business by a bar, then go the extra step to make sure that the bar doesn't spill over into your business. You're kind of walking into something that's already established, so be aware of little eyesores that you might not like, but Debbie goes above and beyond to make sure that those eyesores are not an issue. Um, established clientele.
Okay.
It can grow, you know, and I'm about to cut it short and I'm sorry. And bringing Debbie's to the promenade will definitely help the business in the promenade. It will bring a different spirit to the promenade. I remember when I was in high school, walking over to the promenade, you had your Walgreens, you had your Subway, you had a Chinese buffet, the hair store, miscellaneous stores, whatever, arts and crafts, daycare, whatever, it's gone down. And that is an eyesore in itself. Being a resident and/or used to be resident, somebody that cherishes Forest Park, I don't like driving back down Wenton Road and seeing a promenade like that. So I just believe that Debbie will bring a sense of vitality, some revival to Forest Park and definitely that expansion will definitely help brighten up that promenade. So that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Very well said.
All right. Yeah, please keep it to five minutes.
Okay, let me sign my name real quick. Okay, so the only thing I really want to say is, my whole life, I was raised not only by my mom, but by my grandparents as well. And, um, I'm a little spoiled, that's why she named the bar after me, I feel like. And something I've always admired about my grandmother is no matter what situation came up in the bar, whether if it was four o'clock in the morning and an employee is getting out, or whether it's broad daylight, she will go in there herself at 70 years old, I've seen it all, she will pull up in her car and if she has a problem, she throws them out. And I've always wondered how she gets that, like, fierceness in her and how she keeps the business going. And anytime you can call her, an employee needs help or, you know, they're having, going through a rough time. My grandma was the first one to help anyone in the whole entire community out. I do live in Fairfield, I don't live in Forest Park, but I just moved from the F section. And when I lived in Forest Park, it was the place to go, not only because I was Sydney, just because it's, it's a really fun atmosphere. And I know that my grandma tries her darndest to keep that establishment as safe as possible. And I am not in the bar business and I suck at making drinks, to be honest with you. But I do hair and if I can open up a salon and run it how my grandma does a bar and be half the woman she is, I will be really successful in life. And that's all I have to say.
All right, does anyone else have any other comments to be made? All right, we can just.
Put my glasses on because I can't see. So I've been a Forest Park resident since 1979.
Your name ma'am?
It's Karen Wilson. I live on Carahill. My parents bought a house in 1979 and I've seen Forest Park change, I've seen businesses come and go. And I remember when all this was cornfields. Can I say, can I say that? Uh, can I say that? So, uh, I graduated from Forest Park High School in 1986 and right across the street from where I live is Kemper Metals Park. That was cornfields. When you used to go down Waycross Road, Waycross and Hamilton Avenue, all cornfields. K Mark was there, we had Thriftway. I'm showing my age, I know. I know, it's terrible. But what I want to say, I've been working for, uh, Ms. Rice for four years now. I am 54 years old and I am not trying to start all over. Not saying I'm gonna retire from it, but she gave me a job when I lost my job. She trusted in me, believed in me and I worked during the day. And I can honestly say, there is gonna be trouble. But I will say this, and you have to think about this. When a man comes into a grocery store and shoots up 10 people, kills them all, you don't know their mind state when they walking through that door. I'm not saying that we don't have trouble because we do. There's trouble on the streets of Forest Park every day, we just had three shootings in a week. So you can't say, I understand, and understand a difficult decision that you have to make. But we're trying to do the best that we can do. You know, it is 16 people gonna lose their job. You just lost Walmart. Now, they're going from Walmart, going to Myers, stealing, tearing up the store, parking lots, trash, whatever the case is. So if we lose Myers, they gonna come to Kroger's doing the same thing. Kroger's has a lot of issues with the high school kids. So what I'm trying to say is, only thing we're trying to do is just relocate. We need a bigger location. And we will try to do whatever we can during the day and night to keep it safe. So if you please, think about it in your hearts and your souls to let us move, that's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to open up another bar because she's already here. And I understand it's a difficult decision because of everything that's going on. Just please, and your, because there's people who are gonna be out of jobs, so that's more taxpayers' money going out the door. Because I'm a taxpayer. Everybody that works there is a taxpayer. We have to come up here and we don't feel like it. You know what I mean? We don't feel like it, oh my God, we gotta pay Forest Park taxes. But think about it, every time she sells a drink, it's going to Forest Park. Somebody could come from Avondale, taxpayers' money. So just think about it, hopefully you'll vote in our favor and we would do whatever. Even if you want to, maybe you should sit down and talk to her, call her on the phone, 321-09. Just sit down and talk to her, what can we do to make it better? What can we do as a community?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome, thank you.
I know, I know.
No, we're just gonna limit it to one more person speaking on behalf of, uh, who was in favor of the bar expansion because we gotta get to some agenda items.
I'll make this real quick. My name is Jody, Debbie is my mother. She adopted me. She could have kids, but she just didn't want to go through the pain, so she just popped me. I'm kidding, I didn't have a good life where I was and she rescued me for real, that's really what happened. She does that with a lot of people, I'm sorry, but it's the truth. They didn't tell you that, we raised money for one of the bartender's moms, she didn't have a headstone. So we had a benefit at the bar, raised money for the girl's headstone. Um, she paid a girl's car payment at the grocery store. Girl was crying, couldn't even afford her food, my mom paid it. She's a great woman and if you would please, just please take it in your heart and please pray on it and let her move, I would greatly appreciate it. And that's all I got to say because I'm too emotional.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, I just want to say that I, um...
If you can keep it really brief, really light, you know? Okay.
Hi, my name is Rita Jones, I'm the bar manager at Sydney Saloon. I have managed a couple bars, I've been with Debbie since 2009, I ran her other bar, I've managed Doobie's and Woodline, I've managed... Um, I just wanted to speak about the, what we're trying, the move we're trying to make as far as Sydney. We trying to, I want to change the atmosphere. And I don't know if y'all have been over there and the promenade or walked around there anytime soon, it's windows busted out, it's just a place for kids to hang out. We're trying to change that, we want to make it more upscale, like a place people can come for lunch. You know, I did like a breakfast and mimosas, um, it was, it ended up being a big success, a lot of church people, different crowd. We have a mixed crowd over there, which a lot of bars can say, we have a black crowd, a white crowd, an old crowd, young crowd. I used to, um, work at, um, Almost Home and Jelly's in Seven Hills. Like I have a, a following that has followed me to, to different places. But we're just trying to change as far as me when I came in as manager, I'm trying to change the way people look at Sydney's. We trying to make it more mature, more upscale, we want to go, we're trying to move more towards the lunch and dinner. You know, people can come and kick in and have a nice time as, and get out of the bar aspect of it and more of like a restaurant lounge type atmosphere. So, I mean, we just, I just, we were looking over there trying to, and I just want y'all to go over there and look at how it is right now to see the vision that we trying to do. Like, because it's just, right now, it's just, nothing is over there. And the way we're looking at it, we want to, we want to beautify it over there because it's, it's an eyesore right now. And we literally walked past one day to look through there, we just look, right now, everybody before we came up there, it's shoes, it's beers, it's clothes, it's broken glass. It's, so I feel like we can make the promenade a better place as far as what it is right now. And we just need a chance to do that, that's it.
You know, Debbie, I, um, I'm a business owner as well and, um, started it after my divorce and, uh, I know what it's like, really working so hard and birthing something that only you believe in and paying everybody else before you pay yourself. To make sure that everything goes the way it needs to for this baby and for this business and all the things you have to do in the beginning, just to make sure you can keep putting it back into the business so that it can be a representation of yourself and be beautiful and do what the community needs of it. And that is, and be really proud of it. It is because of businesses that, business owners that have that type of commitment and passion about what they're doing and willing to work with government and willing to work with their community in order to enhance it and make it better. It is not easy, it is not easy keeping staff, it is not easy paying everybody what they need to be paid. It is not easy coming through the pandemic, the way you have been able to do so, when your business is face to face like that. You've had to pivot and you've been able to keep people. It is ab, absolutely, it's, it's amazing, it's remarkable, it is so, so greatly appreciated. I want you to know that it, we understand that work and that passion and those are exactly the kind of businesses that we can...
Keep the clubs down, yeah, everybody was, you know, my staff did, they did this on the route, even this one. They all came in, took the place apart and cleaned it, cleaned it, painted it, cleaned it. They wouldn't let me do it because you know they saw I was too old. They said, you don't need to be doing this, you're too old, but they went out.
And that's what we want, you want, you want leaders that can have people that are willing to fill in those gaps and make those things work. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks y'all, thank y'all so much.
Really quick, I mean, it just goes without saying that, I mean, I can see the community here. You are a community leader, I mean, obviously Sydney Saloon has become a community staple and we thank you for not only your service and dedication to standing this community, um, but we hear you. We understand that people do want those entertainment avenues at late at night. We understand that people want safe entertainment avenues and you've created that space, so we do greatly appreciate that. I don't want to, um, make any promises, I don't want to try to get your hopes up and, and promise you anything like a politician. Um, the only thing that I can tell you is that, um, I understand, I understand why you do want this. The only thing that I can tell you is that we'll just go back, we'll discuss it and then stay in contact with the, this, uh, planning director and then, um, once we make our final determination, the planning director will be in contact with you. And like I said, um, just thank you, just thank you for being a community leader and, and creating community just like you have here because everybody came out to support you, so that is a testament to not only, um, your, your acumen as a business owner, you know, staying in business for that long during pandemics and God knows what else, is, uh, just shows your, your genius. But it also, the people that came out to support you shows that, um, that's your heart, you know, and people really resonate and that comes through your business. So just, we just want to thank you for that, but we will conclude communications from the public at this time. Anybody else on council?
I do have a question for Ms. Rice. I, I do have a question for Ms. Rice, um, Councilwoman Adams. My question to you is, Ms. Rice, if you had to change it from a bar to a restaurant, would you be willing to do that with a liquor license?
Anything we want to do? And, um, Chris was telling me, is it Tetris that's moving in?
Tetris.
Tetris.
I don't know. Restaurant lounge. That are gonna be looking for someplace to go to lunch. This, this was my first thought, we can tell you that, that was my first thought when Chris told me that, we came over here from the windows and I said, we gotta make this into the dining area and what I'm most excited about, and I hope that you guys will let me do it, is a one-on-one, a hunt. And what I'm most excited about, and I hope that you guys will let me do it, is a one-on-one, um, haunt. Where, now, probably shop this down. That, no, and padded, the lattice on. Um, can you just imagine these pretty little round tables with the painful umbrellas? That's how I think.
Yes, ma'am. I've gotta come visit. I've never visited. I've never visited. Yes, ma'am.
What, what day is that?
It is for this month, and I'd really appreciate that.
Moving on to, uh, item number five. This is reports from standing committees. Uh, before we begin reports though, uh, feel free, you can stay or, but this, this is kinda the part where it gets really boring. Um, we would love if people stayed, but you know, if you wanna, if you wanna head out, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you.
I'm Jeris' mom. Jeris' mom.
Do they have fried fish on Fridays? Do y'all have fried, do y'all have fried, Ms. Rice? Ms. Rice, do y'all have fried fish on Fridays? I'll be there Friday. I'll be there Friday for the fish. Yes, ma'am. I'll see you on Friday. Yes, ma'am. See you on Friday. Thank you.
All right. All right, so, all right, thank you, Ms. Rice.
Yes, ma'am.
I've never been here. My daughter talks about it.
All right, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna move on to our first, uh, uh, reporter.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report that on April the twenty-third, we did a community service project with the beautification committee and the lady warriors for the, um, junior high school. It was definitely a success. We cleaned behind all these. Then we went back over to, we did great. We, we had, I don't know how many bags we had, but we had tons of bags. If you look at your, if you, if you look at the Forest Park, uh, Facebook page, you'll be able to see photos of that activity. We had about twenty-two girls that participated um, in conjunction with the, uh, beautification committee. So we had an intergenerational activity that was absolutely phenomenal. The girls did an amazing job. And then we went back and we had pizza and drinks and just kinda talked a little bit about leadership and city government. As a result of that activity, uh, Mayor, I would like to ask if it is at all possible to, um, present those young ladies with their, um, community service appreciation letters in council. Reason being, um, after talking with some of the young ladies, they've never been in chambers, they've never been inside of the building. And I thought it'd be a great opportunity to acknowledge and honor those young ladies for their community service and an absolute job well done.
Okay. And so this is the lady warriors. You wanna add that to our work session item?
Yes, sir, please.
So I'll add that as a acknowledgement. So it'll be a presentation. All right, moving on, um, to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a report, but, um, since our last meeting, we had, we had a, we had a, uh, library listening session. I was able to take my son to, and I wanted to say they did a, they did an absolutely lovely job. Um, several of us were there. And, um, was very pleased about the engagement and how we can move about and kinda redesign and reconfigure what this space will be. Um, tad bit concerned about making sure that students, um, can take part in that, in that brainstorming and visioning. And so, um, we are working on some things, uh, with the library and uh, school in order to get some ambassadors and to bring them, um, to the library in order to, um, tell us their thoughts and ideas about that. Um, Witten Woods also had their annual honors, um, scholars event. They, they recognize over sixty-plus, um, honor students and a total of about hundred and fifty-plus of folks that just received or kids that were able to be acknowledged for their good works at the school. And it was really nice as well. Um, just lastly, the, I had asked about the five, the, uh, five hundred and forty-one business checks at last meeting, and I hadn't heard anything about that. So if we could, if I could find out and unpack what those business checks looks like, um, per the, per the police department. And then in light of, um, the massacre, uh, you know, Forest Park, of course, is, um, heavily diverse. And I think that for the good of the order and for people, um, in the community at large to, to have a sense of understanding about where we are and what our plan is, um, in response to it and/or just in preventative measures and what that looks like. Um, I would love to, to hear what, what our department is working on for that. And that, that concludes my comments.
Okay. All right, so I'll add that to our work session item. Um, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Council. I'd like to say that we do have two, uh, new candidates for various boards. We will be interviewing them soon. Um, I'll begin with Sally so we can set up a time, uh, for those interviews. And that's all I have right now. I want to, I'd like to echo what, uh, Councilmember Adams said about our, uh, Witten Woods Warriors. Um, you know, doing awesome with their, their academics. Um, that just shows that we do have an excellent school district and a very inviting school district. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Harrison, uh, moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report and nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, I wanna thank everyone for coming out to our Next Generation Library Community Improvement Session. Um, it was a great turnout, and we really thank you for submitting your suggestions for our future design. Also, I wanna take time to congratulate all the graduates in the class of twenty twenty. Um, including Witten Woods School District, but we have other...
Twenty-two.
Twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-two. Um, and so not only do we have, uh, Witten Woods Warriors graduating, but we have college students, we have other school districts, um, students who attend other school districts. So congratulations for all your hard work. Um, and also just saying that this is one of my favorite times of year as an educator, as a professor. Um, and just to see the ribbons on the, um, fence just fills my heart of all the whole hard work, um, these young men and women, um, endured during the pandemic. Um, and so congratulations, um, to our graduates.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Moore. And do you have any, uh, work session items to add to the agenda?
Um, no. I'll discuss it with Don.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, I don't have a report at this time, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, did wanna comment in regards to, uh, one of my last meetings where this report we received, uh, from, uh, Mr. Chris Anderson. And it, uh, involved, uh, information on the, uh, uh, project of maintenance report. And I spoke with, uh, HR Director, Andy, asking if he would be able to give some definition to the column names so we can have a bit more clarity on what the definition and what the meaning of this report. So just wanted to get that noted, uh, to see if we can get clarification on this report that was given.
Okay.
Actually, I think there's another one in here that breaks it down a little further if you wanted to look.
Another departmental report, I think. Yes, from, uh...
This is in the Community Development Department report, and it breaks down, um...
Because I do recall this was about, um, the responses and, um, for like public nuisance and and things that, uh, our Public Works Department had seen when they were out. Okay. So it's just a more detailed report?
Yes.
All right.
It appears to be when I looked at it.
Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, more summarizing. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Don. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, yeah, so I do see that in here. So thank you for that, Don. All right, uh, I don't have any work session items to add, um, for you, uh, Ms. Sylvester, but do you have any to add to the work session?
No.
Okay.
All right. This was it. All right.
All right. Thank you. And that concludes item number five. So reports from standing committees. Moving on to item number six, the mayor's report. Um, so actually I do want to, uh, piggyback off of what other coun- council members have said. Do want to congratulate the class of, uh, twenty twenty-two on graduating. It's a tremendous achievement. Um, and to further, um, give evidence of the city, uh, Forest Park and Witten Woods School District's growing relationship. I was actually invited personally by the superintendent of Witten Woods, um, to attend the honors banquet. Um, so there were sixty-plus um, students that were graduating with honors. And this is, uh, not just like a district, uh, requirement. It's actually state requirement. So they said it was actually a record. Um, I don't know if that was a state record or if that was just a district record, but sixty students are graduating this year with honors, and I thought that was a tremendous achievement, especially considering the year that I graduated. It was, it was not that many. I'll say that. And I was not among them. Uh, but, um, it does show that our, our warriors are, um, very academically gifted. It shows that our, our educators are committed to, um, making sure our kids have the best, uh, moving forward from this moment. But, um, we also have, uh, one of our city employees, her own baby boy was there that night graduating with honors. Bailey. So will be attending where?
The Ohio State University.
I want you to repeat that again. The Ohio State? Okay. Yeah, so he's not gonna be too far. I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing. She's, she's scared. Her baby boy is going off to college, but it's a good thing. And he graduated with honors. This, I mean, it's tremendous. It was just a very wonderful ceremony. It was a nice banquet. Um, like, all the kids were very excited. And I, uh, they didn't have this my year, but this year it looked like, I don't know if it was new, but after the graduates went up to, you know, accept their awards, saying that they're graduating with honors, they would also um, give a special acknowledgement to educators that made a positive impact in their life. And I thought that was a very touching sentiment because it shows not only the kids are academically gifted, but they, uh, acknowledge, uh, the people who helped them achieve that. Um, and it was just a very beautiful ceremony. So I do want to thank the superintendent for inviting me. And I'll, I need to make a to-do list, but Sally, if you can remind me to send a thank you to the superintendent. Because, uh, because our relationship between the school district and the city is, is just really great, and we want to congratulate all those students. Um, from there, that actually concludes my report. So we're gonna move on to item number seven, the city manager's report.
I'll keep mine short and sweet. Um, the, um, again, I wanna echo everything you just said. The, um, it is a tremendous, uh, tremendous accomplishment, the amount of awards. And if you see the signs out here on the
Yeah.
On the, I think it was eight million dollars worth of scholarship money.
Yeah.
This year. That's a tremendous amount. It's, it's incredible. And congratulations to Kia and her, and her son. It's a, it's a great accomplishment, and I know she's very proud of him. Um, the, um, we're working on a lot of, a lot of things that are going on in the city, but a lot of development. Um, we're working with the schools directly. In meeting with the superintendent, uh, to talk about some of the, uh, some of the, some of these future developments. And we look forward to working with the schools, uh, to make some of these things happen. And, and, um, I think it only enhances our relationship with the schools as we, as we work together to, uh, uh, build back, uh, certain areas of this community and to, uh, and to, you know, enhance the things that, that we need to enhance. So I look forward to working with, uh, the school district and, uh, everyone involved there. And, uh, but just keep it short and sweet. I've been out of town for the last week. The, uh, we, we still have a lot of good things going on this, over the summer. Um, I would refer everyone to our Facebook page and to our website. We have some concerts in the parks that are going to begin, I believe, in June. We have our bike, um, cycle coming up again in June as well.
Second annual.
Yes. And, uh, of course, we're gonna have the jazz in the parks. We've got a whole list of things. I'm gonna refer everyone. As more information becomes available, just kinda keep checking back at our website and to our Facebook page. And, uh, we also have ours. I made a little, uh, video with Jermaine last week, or I guess it was last week, where, um, again, we still have our We Thrive group, which is really, really active in our community, and they do great things. And, um, they have the fitness classes every, every Saturday.
Yeah.
For anyone, any fitness level, even fat old bald guys like me. Because I just like to watch. I don't wanna have that heart attack. But anyway, we have a great time, and they have a great time. I'm, and, uh, so if anybody's interested in those, feel free to stop by. It's a great opportunity to meet some friends, get engaged in the community and, um, so we got a lot of good things going on this summer. So I'll give, uh, a better list of it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Refer to my podcast, um, and also refer to our, um, to our Facebook page and our website for more information on all the good things going on this summer. And if anybody has any ideas that they'd like to see, uh, bring them up, because we're always looking to, uh, again, to enhance the quality of life and to make things better for all of our citizens.
Absolutely. Thank you, Don. Uh, does anyone have any questions for the city manager's report? All right. And, uh, Don, you know, you're in good shape to me, you know? Looking, looking pretty tanned too from the vacation.
When you stand still long enough, like I do, and sit down long enough, it's not just get you.
Just right on you.
Just get you. Never, if you move fast enough, it'll only get you in the face. That's what my wife says, but I don't believe that.
All right, moving on to item number eight on the agenda, other reports. We're gonna start with our law director, Mr. John Whiteoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's been a lot of legal activities. Um, I have a pile of things here, but I, I think you'll probably be hearing about them through the city manager, so I won't go through them tonight. But I want to address, uh, what was raised with the group here. And I'm, I did some Googling and pulled up our code and fished through it, although it's hard to fish through it on a phone. Um, I, I think Chris Anderson, the city manager, need to be involved in that. First, you have to make sure that promenade is zoned. Forget about where the bar is. It's, the prohibition is south of I two seventy-five. So this is south of I two seventy-five. But is a bar allowed in that, even if we could get around it? But if you look at the code section one fifty point one five four C, the prohibition south of seventy-five has one exception, which is an establishment which is already there at the time that section was passed, which is her establishment. It was already there. If you look at non-conforming, it's non-conforming land and building. So her current land, her current building falls under that non-conforming permitted use. But if she moves, she's now, um, not under that exception. So her best bet, in my opinion, this is why I say you could talk to Chris, is she establishes a restaurant. Our definition and zoning code of bar and restaurant are really simple. If you predominantly sell beer, liquor, wine, alcoholic beverages, and it's incidental to your business, you might have sandwiches or food, you're a bar. But if your primary purpose is you're a restaurant, and restaurants do sell alcohol, but your primary purpose is to be a restaurant, and a restaurant can even have an interior bar. I'm sure all of you have been to restaurants. They have an interior bar where people wait till they get their table. But if she does put up tables on the patio with cute umbrellas, things like that, that certainly will go further towards her, um, being a restaurant. If she caters, that would help her be a restaurant. And then, of course, if her receipts establish she has a higher food volume than a alcohol volume, that would establish she's a restaurant. So that would probably be her best course. Otherwise, our code would have to be changed. And now you're gonna get into, you can't give that business an exception and not some other business an exception.
Okay.
So.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that, John.
Okay.
All right, um, uh, moving on to our other report will be from the clerk of council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, which is new business. Uh, but first I need a motion to suspend.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-two. This ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
There, oh, it's been moved improperly second. Is there no discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, will the clerk please call a roll on a motion to suspend?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, motion passes seven to zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty by title only?
Ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-two. Declaring improvements to parcels of real property located in the city of Forest Park, Ohio, to be a public purpose under section five seven zero nine point four zero of the Ohio Revised Code, exempting such improvements from real property taxation. Declaring certain pru- declaring certain public improvements to be necessary for the further development of those parcels and establishing a tax increment equivalent fund.
All right, is there a motion? Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, I moved if we adopt ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-two.
It's been moved improperly second. Is there any discussion?
This is, this is for the Omniplex Drive.
Okay.
And it will, uh, support future public improvements along Omniplex Drive and Omniplex Court. and Witten Road, uh, in reference to, uh, in the next ten years. So with that on this fifteen-dash-twenty-twenty-two, I move that we adopt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As far as I can see, it'll be a first reading unless the city manager thinks that it should, is it something that needs to be an emergency or pass?
Well, the problem with that is we haven't designated it as an emergency.
Right.
So as it reads right now, this should be just a first reading.
Okay, it's a first reading?
Okay.
Also, no vote tonight, then?
Yeah.
Right.
Alright, so then we're going to, uh, move on to our second item, which is, uh, resolution. This must be read in full, so, um, will the clerk please read this resolution, uh, number twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-two, um, in full?
Okay. Resolution number twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-two. A resolution consenting to the execution of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, and Stigler Supply Company within an enterprise zone of Hamilton County. Whereas by ordinance number thirty-nine-dash-nineteen-ninety-four adopted by the city of Forest Park on October the third, nineteen-ninety-four, hereafter referred to as council. And by ordinance number ninety-one-dash-forty-six-dash-CD dated October the first, nineteen-ninety-one, adopted by the Village of Green Hills and by the resolution adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, hereafter to be called the Board, on January the fourth, nineteen-ninety-five, volume two-five-seven, image fifteen designated the Green Hills Forest Park Urban Jobs and Enterprise Zone pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, O R C, chapter five-seven-zero-nine. And whereas effective January the twenty-fifth, nineteen-ninety-five, the Director of Deve- of Development of the State of Ohio determined that the aforementioned area designed by the Board in said resolution contains characteristics set forth in O R C, section five-seven-zero-nine-point-six-one-A-I-A-C and F. And J T T R Properties D B A. Stigler Supply Company has proposed a project that involves new real and tangible personal property investment of one million, six-hundred-eleven-thousand dollars. The retention of twenty-two full-time jobs. And whereas, wait a minute, some sort of. The retention of twenty-two full-time jobs and the creation of three new jobs over a three-year period and the retention of and creation of employment opportunities by the city of Forest Park. And whereas the council of the city of Forest Park has reviewed the proposed project and is of, of the opinion that Stigler Supply Company is qualified to create and preserve employment opportunities. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio, section one. That the Forest Park City Council hereby gives its consent for the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Stigler Supply Incorporated, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A and made a part of this resolution. The city manager is authorized to execute the consent and approval on behalf of the council of the city of Forest Park, Ohio, section two. That the city of Forest Park shall compensate the Witten Woods City School District when the payroll associated with this project meets or exceeds one million dollars pursuant to section five-seven-zero-nine-point-eight-two of the Ohio Revised Code and City Council Resolution number forty-eight-dash-nineteen-ninety-five. Section three, this resolution shall be enforced and take effect from and after its passage.
Alright. Thank you, Sally, is, uh, there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
A motion that we, uh, that we moved to adopt on resolution number twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-two.
There a second?
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion?
Heard the full reading on the, uh, on this resolution and then it was, uh, the different brands, uh, wrote into Forest Park and assists with side load with their, uh, with their plans moving forward in Forest Park with their business and, and making a one-hundred-three-million-dollar addition to their current building. So, uh, based on what we received in our reading and details, I motion that, uh, we adopt resolution number twelve-dash-twenty-twenty-two.
Ask half a question.
Yes, Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, the, um, the one million dollars that they need to meet or exceed, is that just in one, this year?
No, that's, yes, but that's when, that's when it kicks in. That is a, it's a state statute that's a compensation requirement for, for the schools. Yeah, they don't, uh, and it's only on the new employees.
On the.
So they're probably not gonna take that yet.
Not.
We're not gonna have compensation for schools. Unless they meet that, that's basically what it is.
Okay, um, uh, since this was not posted, is, we're still doing a roll call?
Uh, resolutions are always, um, voted on with the first reading. They don't have to have two readings like ordinances.
Right, okay, will clerk please call a roll on the motion?
Brown?
Yes.
Clark? Harrison?
Yes.
Holt? Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alright, looks like the resolution passes, um, seven to zero. Uh, so next up, uh, is a, alright, so a motion to direct the clerk of council to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that the city of Forest Park does not request a hearing regarding a liquor license request for, uh, Dolgin Midwest LLC, uh, D B A Dollar General Store, two-two-three-five-six-six-three-three on Northland Boulevard, Forest Park, Ohio, four-five-two-four-oh. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and properly seconded. Um, so the discussion, I mean, really, this is just kind of a, um, there's really no objection on our end, so this is kind of like a housekeeping item. Um, and the police have looked into this request and they have no issue with it. So will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
It can be a voice vote.
Oh, can it? Yes, well then, uh, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Alright. Oh, was, was there one no? Okay, so, um, motion passes, uh, six to one. Uh, and then next, uh, so they, I need a, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
I motion to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the department report.
Okay. Alright, fine, alright. Yeah, sorry, alright, is there a second? Did you make the motion?
I'm sorry.
Alright, is it, alright, it's been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none, uh, this can be a voice vote as well, so, uh, all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, looks like motion passes, and that is the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the body? Is it?
The, uh, the graduation is at Xavier University on, um, the nineteenth.
Yes.
It's on nineteenth at seven-thirty.
Nineteenth at seven-thirty, okay. Alright, thank you.
I do have one more thing I wanted to bring up. Um, I would like to put on for work session, uh, and I do apologize, Mayor and Council. Um, I would like to talk a little bit more about additional, uh, resources that can be acquired, uh, for beautification committee for, um, the city of Forest Park. Flowers, additional flowers, flower beds, hanging baskets, et cetera. I'd like to find out if there's any resources or anything that we can do to kinda line our streets and just kinda make it a little prettier as we drive up and down Witten Road, et cetera.
Alright, I'll add that as a discussion item. Um, is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Any other di- bus- business to come before the body? Hearing none, uh, this council meeting is adjourned.